Well, it is six oh one P M on Monday, April fifteenth. I will go ahead and call the meeting's order. And Secretary Johnson, D C D roll call please.
Hey, Christine Gator.
Here.
Lisa Mellon.
Here.
Nick Reed Evan.
Here.
Nick Nodel.
Here.
Sarah Nett.
Here.
Others in attendance, John Gator.
Here.
Patty Garcia.
Here.
Janice Foster.
All right, thank you. Seeing no community, we'll skip over community participation. And move into the consent agenda, which is our March eighteenth finance many meeting minutes. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, or gain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion. I make the motion.
And second?
Well, second time.
For all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those pros and cons, any none, any passes? Moving into financials.
So your financials are in your packet along with the detailed ledger report. Don is in Texas. In the bayou, as he calls it, they have a little house out there that they goes and takes care of, so. He wasn't able to join us tonight, but if you have any questions or comments, we'll make sure to take them down and get a response. To you. Or Janice may be able to answer them.
Might be.
Might be, so happy, happy to hear what, any questions you might have?
Any questions? Look at this, making finances boring again.
Finally, they've been four years coming.
Yeah, we're finally there. Thank you. And if you see something later, please let us know.
I do, I love the feedback because most of it I have to correct. It's true, it's like. Oh, I'm, I'm so glad we have seven other eyes to put on this and just makes Stephen that much better, so.
And you don't enter it all, like different departments enter in transactions, is that correct?
It's sometimes, yeah, it's not necessarily a hundred percent Angela and I, so. It's good to everyone sees it and keeps their eyes on it.
Any questions about the detailed ledger report? I, I do wanna say thank you that we're getting the, the reporting monthly that is, that has been. Uh, requested and. Several months now of it being on time.
We are posting that on our website, on our finance page.
I did have a question on the legislative. On page nine for the, I think it's for the benefits, it's already at forty-nine percent for the year. Do we just accrue all that at the beginning of the year? Or did we, are we expending more than we budgeted on that? If we could check into that and I'm not even sure what that's for.
That's for your, um, uh, like, yeah, workers' comp and things like that, so it shouldn't have all accrued at the beginning, we'll have to check, there must be. There might be something.
Okay. That's why I wanna check on that, so it's like.
You make a note to check in with Stephanie, thank you.
Yeah. It's just like forty-nine percent in February.
I know, I can't go through and check those, and some of them make sense, like your recent subscriptions and things like that. I mean, cause we pay all that out at the beginning of the year.
I wanna go back to your thing about salaries and benefits and certain percentage, and I remember last year the benefits were really high for some reason. I feel like there's something else in there, but it's just a payroll in the details, so it is coming from something from payroll, but.
Mm-hmm.
Something.
We'll check into it.
Yeah, we just figured out it, cause it may be something to just.
Is it only workers' comp, is the only benefit they have?
That I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't think of anything else.
And, and their office, so that's a really low workers' comp.
Mm-hmm. Well, and the total's nine ten for the whole year, so to be maybe half, this is a little odd, so we'll just check into it, we'll let y'all know.
If, if you look at the budget, um, Nick, what, what's the percentage that you said normally is?
Uh, usually around, somewhere around twenty-eight percent benefits. Each. It depends, like. Uh, no, that would, that's everything but taxes. So of your retirement and health insurance or, um, health insurance and. Workers' comp, like all of that would be in. It can be higher if the people are, um, in a lower pay category because benefits. Still have a minimum cost, but somewhere around twenty-eight to thirty-five percent is pretty normal.
But that makes sense because their pay is really low, a hundred dollars a month. And then the benefit, is, is workers' comp based on what you make?
It's a risk.
It's, it's, it's.
It's a risk, yeah, so it could be that they have.
I don't know, but if we're, I hate to be, I mean, for fifty percent already almost for the year, so we'll have, we'll take a look at it.
Maybe we just budgeted too little, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll check.
Yeah.
I don't wanna think that, let's, let's, let's think there is something else.
Okay.
Think it's something else.
And then also just to check on the water fund, the page eighteen. The telephone service is already at forty-two percent after two months. So maybe just checking on that to see if we have other things that are maybe getting pushed into that, or if our bill went up and we missed that, so just another thing to keep.
What page?
Uh, page eighteen of the packet.
It's, um, two oh four, three, four, five, three, four, five.
I only budgeted seven hundred.
Say that five times, thanks.
I know. And that's why things get misentered sometimes, I mean, I don't.
Oh, yeah.
Cause it's two oh four, three, four, two oh four, three, two, the last four digits and.
Mm-hmm.
And then raw water assessments are fifty percent, but I assume those hit in chunks, so that's, that ma- that one makes sense, I'm not worried about that one.
Yeah. That as well, telephones for this.
All right, anything else?
And, um, L C S O is gonna be added into the February report, is that?
March, I think they would pay them on a quarterly basis.
No, but in the, they need to be in budgeted, their budget amount is not in here.
Oh, yes, yes, I think that's what Don said, he was gonna, it'll be included in the next one.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Yes, we need to copy Janice on that email. So we can make sure we got that done.
The dues and subscriptions on page twenty-seven. Under park fund or hundred and thirty-three percent.
A lot of the dues and subscriptions are over.
Mm-hmm. And it might be because of, we didn't, people may not have budgeted for hires when it came time to like having to. Have them be part of, was it C R P A and things like that, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I know, I saw some of them were over like one oh two, one oh five, one ten, and then that, that I get, but the one forty-nine, one forty-three, that's a little bit, I'll check in with it.
I'm just curious, do you rebudget for that sort of thing, or do you just leave it for the year?
We would probably just leave it for the year unless it's something that's, that's a large amount that we would bring back as a budget amendment. Um, really, we're looking at bottom line, um, for our budget, so it's always a, a best guess.
Yeah.
You know, when we budget these expenses, um, but if it's a large item, or if it looks like, you know, we're gonna be at like two hundred percent for anything, I think that we would probably think that's a budget amendment mid-year.
Okay. Thank you. The main thing we're looking for is that thirteen point four percent at the bottom. Of the total recreation, that's where you start turning the issues, so as long as our overall fund comes in below what we expended, say we're gonna expend. If it's higher in one category than the other, that's not problematic. Where that is more so is we wanna track that on our end, it's like, hey, are we making sure that we're putting things in the right categories so we can properly plan for futures, so. So it's good to stay with that. As long as the whole thing doesn't go up, but we don't.
Mm-hmm.
Stay, okay.
What's the I P, are we going to, um. Put it in the fund that it belongs in each month, each quarter, did we decide on doing something different, I don't remember.
And Don hasn't made a decision, we talked about that last week. I think he is holding out to make that, uh, uh, Nick decision, so when he comes on board, he can kind of.
Almost enough.
Yeah. And it's like, not yet, not yet.
But we did talk about that last week, and he wants to reserve that for Nick to.
Oh, they can talk about, talk it through, and I know Don is leaving some of those decisions, you know, so they can work through it, talk through what's good in governmental finance. And then help Nick craft a decision based on, um, Don's experience and his expertise, so that. Nick can learn through the process as opposed to if I'm just making a decision, I'm not making a decision yet.
You're still talking about that form, fun, right?
Yep, it is not off the radar, that's for sure.
All right, any other discussion? None, we'll move into our next agenda item, which were the responses from our March meeting. Uh, sending these out to everyone. Looks like items were corrected. Uh, any questions? All, Janice, thank you for, for getting the answers out, sending them to us, um, I do like this process. Where we're.
Yeah, I love it, Patty started it, so I'm in a position to take it over, so.
I, I like the process that we, we note these during the meeting, we have time to get an accurate answer the first time. And then it is shared in the me- in the meeting minutes, so that it, there's a public record of it, so. This is a good use of our time as a committee, and that time, we're not going back and forth several times, yeah, so. Cool. Well, thank you, Janice. Bye, and y'all, all right. Ms. Garcia, once you done that then.
These are the finance committee term expirations, everybody's term expires in June of twenty. Twenty. Four. Um, we would love for you all to reapply, have to apply again, that's not assuming. Application, I have already received Nick's application, so thank you so much, um, so deadline is May third.
Just clarify, does say I love the sentence, the comments are required to apply, so you don't have a choice, you just. That's how I read it.
Without saying it, you know?
No, I really hope you guys will consider reapplying, you guys have done an amazing job, so. If you haven't yet, please do.
I think that's evidence in the fact that how these meetings has improved the, I mean, just everything that has gone on and on. Uh, clarification, it says expired June twenty twenty-four, and then, um, terms are June twenty twenty-four, it's been put, so is May the last meeting of the committee as it stands?
Well, uh, uh, y- yes, well.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So we have, um, we have interviews scheduled, I think, for the second meeting and first meeting in May. For the Board of Trustees, so that way they can do appointments the second meeting of May, and then we are set to roll for the first meeting in June as the, um. Finance committee.
We come back, May, the third Monday in May.
Yes, yes, you're still, you're still, yes, we're trying to make this happen, so there are no pickups, but best laid plans. Sometimes don't work out, but that's, that is the plan.
Any other questions? All right.
I have one, actually. Why, why does everybody's term expire all at once? Mo- most of the time on committees, you have staggered.
So the thought process behind that was when we created the finance committee, was the goal behind the finance committee is it's designed to be a committee that kind of helps the Board of Trustees over. Oversee the finances, right, cause what are the board's priorities and this and that, but they're kind of that extra set eyes, cause most of the people that have been on the board the last two years. I have a background in kind of some accounting work, but everyone else is like I T, management. Real estate agent, electrical. Another person in I T and vehicles, so I'm like, one person out of seven actually has a background with finances, so. The idea is having a finance committee that can kind of help with whatever the needs and desires of the board are, so the reason that we set it to just be a two year is that when the new board is se- seated. They can interview candidates and then make their selection of people that they think would be a good fit based on whatever their priorities are for the next two years, so. Whether that was the best way to do it or not, that's what we chose to make it when we did that, and the idea being is the new board may have different financial priorities than the old board. And so we wanted to give them the opportunity to say, hey, these are the people we think would help us reach our goal in terms of priorities for finances. So that's the reason that they all expire every two years, is so the board can say here, these are the people that we think that would be helpful to. Help pursue ours, cause their priorities will likely be different than the priorities of the board the last two years.
Okay.
That was the logic behind it.
Is that with the other counter?
Um, I don't recall how their terms were set up, um, that's just what we went with, I know, I'd have to go back and look at it.
Yeah, they did it, there was varying, some were. Some of the finance committees that I looked at were the Board of Trustees, there was Board of Trustees members that were sat on, they were like three, three of them were the. Finance committee, I think that is how Salida was.
I think, yeah, like they had like two board members.
Yeah, and it's.
Then they had like two residents, I think, and then they had a staff member, and then a treasurer, I think that's how they had it set up.
So they, they've all been a little different and stuff, so this is, yeah. I mean, there's nothing saying we can't change it if for some reason it, if the board decides they wanna start making stagger terms this we got first time around, but.
So the one thing that I'd like to ask, I guess, is, I was interested in my board report, but it's relevant here, um, if we can do it the next meeting, or you guys can do, I don't, I might be here as public next meeting, but. Um, for the next meeting, if you guys can take the next month and kind of write down from your standpoint, what worked well, what are good things that you liked about finance many, what are things you'd like to improve? And then kind of bring that back to the next meeting, so you guys can discuss that as a finance committee, and then staff can. Get that input back over to the new Board of Trustees, just that way, like it'd be great to kind of give feedback, hey, over two years, here's what's worked well, here's what we feel could be improved. And that way they can just say, hey, how can we make things better, so. That'd be my request to you guys, if you're willing to do that. Then you can just make that agenda item at the next meeting and talk about it. So.
All right, well. Any other discussion? I'm curious. All right, next agenda then has already been. Uh, spoiled.
Yay.
Spoiler.
Yay, Nick, so excited to have you on board, uh, starts April twenty-ninth. Um, Don will be here, you don't know this yet, so I'm telling you now, and I will send you an email though, um, Don will be here, I think it's May second, and potentially May third, so Thursday, Friday. And then Monday and Tuesday of each week following, um, just to be working with you hands-on, face-to-face, and then. Working with you remotely, um, Wednesday, Thursdays, and Fridays. You will be starting with a local, like a government finance one oh one. To kind of get you indoctrinated to the things related to a local government and finances. Um, I'm gonna get you connected with some people in the area who are finance directors, who work with the cell, so that if you have. Those types of questions and need some assistance, these are some really great people, Mitzi will be one of them. Um, and. You will be working on the first quarter review with him. Um, the five-year financial outlook for the general fund. Um, and then he'll be back in the fall to help guide through the budget process. So you're gonna have lots of help and lots of assistance, very excited to have you start, and I'll connect with you, and we can do your first couple of days offline, but we are so excited to have you.
Sounds like a firehouse.
Sorry, I keep going.
They're, they're coming for you.
I'm, I'm excited, I, I genuinely, the last two years on this committee has taught me a lot, and, um, I have. If anyone doesn't already know, between my involvement with the chamber and the main street program, uh, Boys and Girls Club, the. As far as Chover, I, I love this town, um, I live here, I lived here since twenty sixteen, my whole. Family's here, um, it's a really exciting opportunity to serve. Uh, our community, um, I've loved what I've done with credit unions for. Eight years, nine years, I'm done in banking for seventeen years, um, but. This was a, an opportunity to, like I said, really serve the community, and, um. I'm, I'm excited, I'm very, very excited, and, uh, so I'll be coming to these meetings, and I don't have to apply.
He was sitting here. It's gonna be fun, we're gonna have a blast.
Yeah, thank you to, uh, this, this board for your support, um, uh, over the, over the last two years, and. I'm looking forward to the next adventure.
Adventure it is.
Any other questions on this agenda item? Who's our vice chair? You'll, I guess what, you did our next one.
Good coverage, I like it.
Yeah, I will just say it was, it's hard going into interviews, knowing I had to interview Nick, of like, I gotta set aside, I'd like to work with him on the finance committee and be objective. But, uh, you just did a great job when you came in and interviewed, um, on the exercise that we gave people, you were the only one that actually hit the exercise and kept it at where it was supposed to be. And it was funny, cause when we got done, you brought great things out, and the mayor's like, well, did you just have all this in the finance committee? This was all new stuff that I have not heard discussed, which I was, I was excited to hear that from you, and that was one of the things is. You've done a good job of letting other people talk in the meeting, so it was really great to hear your analysis, and I appreciate that you were very straightforward about, here's the experience I have, here's where I don't have, but your willingness to. Step in and get the training that you need to do the job well, and you know where we're at, where we've been, and I think that that's important, as we need someone who can help see us through the other side, so. Very excited to have you step up to the plate.
You said that salaries conversation is supposed to be at twenty, twenty-eight, twenty, right?
Around twenty-eight, yeah.
We're about thirty, so we're good.
Yeah.
Looked into that very.
That's good.
There you go. We try to take care of you.
Cool, any other? Uh, thank you. Just to be, uh, any, any other comments on that?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Are you, do you have any ideas, since I'm so new here, I don't have the history, I'm curious what you. Personally think we would be doing beyond June. Now that the audits are getting, like, everything is getting cleaned up. And our meetings are so short. Um.
In other words, what's the purpose of the finance committee going forward?
Yeah, is that, do you see that changing, is it? Getting to be turned into an audit committee or something like that instead of a monthly, or, I don't know, that, that's my question.
I, I think the. The first area we would need to address that question to is, is the board, so there is a, a change on the board. Um, what do they want out of the finance committee? Um, there are some outlined expectations of what is, um, what we're supposed to be reviewing, what's supposed to be provided to us. A- in the ordinance, so making sure that that's still happening. The ordinance also does allow for us to skip meetings, that there are no agenda items, so it may not need to be a monthly. A monthly meeting going forward, but I think there is. First and foremost is what, what does the board need from us as, as the advisory committee? And we'll know more about that come May.
Well, we have monthly reports, I don't see why we wouldn't meet monthly to check the reports, so. Um, and then also there's policies, right, that we never got to, because we've been working on fixing the reports, making policies in place, um. And I remember them all, I just remember cash handling was one concern that Dom had, but I don't remember any of the others, but.
I do know that. As someone with extensive policy and procedure experience, that is an area that I. Uh, I'm going to jump into right away, cause I wanna learn, A, what does it say now? Are we doing it, what changes do we need to make, I think that's a, uh, e- an easy way, good way to onboard, um. To get into an understanding of what should be happening.
And that's on your, that, that's on your list. That, that's on your, not, not, not to have to have Don help you with list.
Yeah.
So there's like A P, there was A P policy, the, we wanna review the purchasing policy. Some municipalities just do an overall financial policy, where all of those policies are in, are in one document, which. I love it, looks so clean and it looks great, but you know, that'll be up to the discretion of our finance director, and then of course he would bring that to you all for review.
And policies you, for the board, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, policies are board, procedures are internal, so, um, policies. As a committee of the board, what would come through here.
Thank you, that, that helps, yeah.
No, I don't think anyone's up there.
No, they're still gonna be, we will find work for you to do, and then we'll be starting to roll in a budget, stay in July.
Yeah.
So, and then water rates, and I mean, it just, it just continues to evolve, and we're, we'll be working on audit until the end of the year, I'm sure, between the twenty-two and twenty-three audits.
Which is a really nice transition into our next agenda item, twenty-one audits.
Yep, so, um, there's the memo in your packet from Don, which he submitted to the Board of Trustees as well. I think the one piece, the one piece that he continues to talk about is that it was a clean audit. Um, meaning that he says the financial statements for the year present fairly the financial position and activities of the town. Which is, is what we were hoping for and believing, we did not feel there was anything. Misappropriated or anything that was done that was inappropriate with our finances, we just needed the audit to prove it. So, um, Hinkle is currently, I mean, we're already uploading information, um, for Hinkle. And we're not sure, I know Don was gonna check with them to see if they were gonna do it concurrently, the twenty-two and twenty-three audits, or if they were gonna be two separate actions. Cause a lot of the information would be the same, and then testing our. It's gonna be amazing. I'll be on time.
And normal.
Yes, normal time along with all the other municipalities, it'll be great.
I had a question about the audit, I know it dawned last year, but, um. I don't remember, back in twenty twenty-one, it's so long ago, but it. In the general fund, it shows that there were no transfers, I printed it out.
Okay.
I don't know what page it's on, um. And I, I thought we always, we started doing the admin transfers. And I don't know what happened, but they're not showing up, are they somewhere else, or do we not do them that year?
I asked him about this when we reviewed it, I'm trying to recall. Are you talking about the transfers out of the general fund or the ones into the other funds?
What's they're missing?
So the transfer that I think he said into the other funds, they put them under management fees or something, in the enterprise funds?
Transfers in, you said?
Or out. Out of the other ones were in, cause the transfers in were actually in. So he wasn't looking into all of that?
They go on the. Since in all the other audits, it shows on the P and L after revenue and expenses. I don't want it showing in revenues. I mean, the proper place would be, but there's nothing there.
I thought it was in the statement, and.
Which is hard to compare, like twenty twenty with twenty twenty one, when they're not the same.
Yeah.
So yes, it's in, like, if you go to page one twenty three, operating expenses, management fees is the one point two two million, which is what is on the note that Sarah pointed out as the and, and then under the general fund.
It's not showing on their street fund, the amount that was transferred to general fund on the P and L. We have the page that shows that they were transferred, but then where is it showing on the, you know?
You're telling me how to fly it.
It's been the one that I have for now. I noticed that, tell me which page it was on. It's like written it down. So I had found the transfer into the general fund. I couldn't, I couldn't find the transfers out of the other funds, and that's when Don told me it was under the management.
Right, which that.
The that pieces.
At least for.
At least for the water fund, but not free and park. Combined with some other numbers, I'm doing a search for the document for those numbers and again one.
We may have to get back with the. So it's street and park that we kept track of them.
In general.
In the general.
The revenue for the general. I see it on page one hundred and fifty four, public work, overhead allocation.
Okay, so there is some explanation of this on page one oh four.
Seventeen, one point seven million to public works.
And that's where I saw that, that page thirty seven for that score. I'm on page one fifty.
I see.
Yeah, it says it was allocated to the general fund, but it's under the expenses, and it might be under the revenue if it was, came into the general fund. So yeah, we'll look into that.
And it's under expense, expenses as a like as a negative, which makes it positive. So it, the actual, it's reducing the expenses rather than showing as revenue or as income. It's reducing the.
Yes.
From the income, yeah.
Right.
So that's, that's why it's done as a under expenses, because it's reducing the, it's kind of like when you're doing your taxes. And you.
You'd have to remind us of that today, right?
At least anyone forgot what today is.
I got this, so that sheet, it says the bottom line is negative one forty two thousand, and that is on here under the expenses, so we're saying the money we got back is under public work, negative one forty two, and then general government. That's why we're at one point seven, it reduces the expense.
It reduces expense, so it's not actually income.
Yes.
Okay.
Good job.
Wish I heard it out.
We got that one for free.
Stop, Nick.
Next one's we gotta pay for.
All right, all right, and I'll get better when I have like, not a thirteen inch screen. So jumping back and forth, trying to look at what the numbers in the report and where they follow. All right. Anyone else have, so do we have audit, any follow up for the audit that we need to go back to Don or anyone on?
Well, now I have a question, because why is public work negative? Why, did we reimburse public works too much of overhead costs? Because their personnel is one point three, and we reimbursed them one point seven. So why are we overpaying public works for overhead?
Major sir.
I'm on one fifty.
Thank you.
Well, was, was that allocation made at the close of the year? Or was that made before the close? Because it made an estimated amount before.
It would have been, I don't know that, I don't remember.
I think Don was gonna look into that, because I'd asked him about that, where expenses were negative.
Okay.
And so he had, so, he obviously he wasn't here in twenty twenty one, so he said likely could have just been a fate. Because a lot of times what happens is we budget for a certain amount of expenses for salaries, and then if we have vacancies, positions aren't filled or whatever, and it could have been that they just never updated. So he, I believe he was gonna check on that, so he can still follow up and see if he has answers to that, but obviously he wasn't here, and we don't have, I don't have any finance personnel that were here in nineteen ninety one. We may not be able to find answers to that one, but.
I, that makes a lot of sense.
That's what he had said off the cuff, but.
Yeah, I'll check and see if there's anything, and I can go back and check my notes to see if there's anything from twenty.
The overhead, I, I get you with vacancies and fully staffed, you know, it'd be more can we then like recalculate at the end of the year before transferring the money so that we don't take out more than we should from our water fund that is suffering? Is that a possibility?
That would be a great thing to raise, if I'm a financier.
You understand what I'm getting at?
I do, yeah.
All right, yeah.
Do you do a more
I, Larimer County, they have to bill when they use the IT department, when the election office uses the IT department, the IT department bills them for their time, so it's like exact, and I know we don't do that, but but then we don't come up with this issue where we overcharge our water fund for resources we didn't use, they didn't use. So how to not spend all the time detailed billing, billing like Larimer County does, but not overcharge the water fund, somewhere in the middle there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I know, I can't find, I was looking for three point two, I just added a one point five and a one point seventy. I'm looking for three point two, I'm like, I don't see it anywhere. That's because there was no three point two, I added it.
All right, so. Pull back up one day.
Oh, that's about it.
And back to our agenda. Any questions about the audit? All right, seeing none. I know that I'm next up, but I will first go around and see if there's any board reports. Anyone on the board have anything they'd like to share? All right, seeing none, trustee Gator, on behalf of the finance committee, we would like to say thank you for the time you've spent with us, everything you've brought us, the support, the questions you've been able to answer. We appreciate your time. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and being part of putting this committee together. As a token, a small token of our appreciation, we have a certificate to say thank you for these last two years.
So, well, thank you guys, it's been amazing to work with you guys, you guys have been awesome, you guys have far gone beyond what I hoped the finance committee could be. So you guys have, you guys made it work, it's not been about me. I love that I just sit here and listen to you guys come up with all this stuff, like, that's the goal, so it's, you guys have been amazing, and it's been an honor to work with you guys, and like I said, I hope you guys will reapply, so you can help the next board, so, because we still got a lot of financial, the good news is we got a lot of this stuff fixed, so that I'm excited about you guys, the vision, like, looking forward, right, that's a lot of what the new board has talked about, the new board members talk, coming in and talked about, where do we go going forward, where, what does this look like going forward? And so I think that it would be great for Nick to have the support of the finance committee to say, what does this look like? You know, looking at policies, procedures, things like that, helping him come up with, hey, here's some good ideas, looking at things, you know, people are talking about a rec, it's been a big thing people have talked about, what does that look like financially? You guys are a great resource to kind of help go through some ideas and help support the Nick finance team department through that, so looking forward to you guys. We're gonna apply. Thank you guys very much.
Weaver J U, thank you. Any staff reports? And any board reports?
I already made my board report, I was gonna thank you guys, which I just did, and then I was gonna ask you guys to add an agenda item next meeting to kind of bring back your thoughts and things from the committee, so we can kind of turn it over into the ones, and I talked about it earlier, so I don't have any other further board reports for you guys, it's been an honor working with all of you, and I hope you guys continue serving the town.
Well, seeing no further agenda items, I officially am going to be resigning my position on the finance committee, and I will turn it over to our now chair to adjourn the meeting.
Um, adjourned.